I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes for a regular meeting on December eleventh.
Motion made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye. I'm gonna make the motion to approve the minutes for one and two, non-public. December eleventh, second.
Motion made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the consent.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Beverly, our minute taker, believe this is your last meeting. After ten years, remotely ten years. Thank you. And public input?
I have nothing. Something I brought, Mike and I talked about earlier in the week. And it has to do with, you know, we're doing so, I'm. Amendment in the planning board there, and one of the conservation commission bringing one up. And that's to do with the seventy-five, but a buffer on the wetlands. And it was talked about on the planning board, whether that seventy-five feet could be put into current use. For the wetman, wetlands, sorry, the wetlands can be put into current use no matter what size. But dry land is used with a tennic or something like that, so. Mike and I talked about it, and he didn't think that it could, and I haven't found any evidence that it could. But dry, add dry lands into the wetlands for your current use. So, any ideas on that? Hasn't come up, I don't imagine it's come up. That was just a question we had, said I researched it before the next planning board meeting, which is.
You're a nightmare for assessing.
Right, it'd be a tough, they were like three hundred and sixty-four wetlands that we've identified, if they all were in current use, it probably wouldn't, but that's. Quite a little nightmare there. And it's, it's also, it's around ponds and streams and things to the. I don't think that was, I never, never tell, but anyways, it was voted on on the planning board and brought up that, it was. Consent was that it probably could go under current use. Because the idea was that it's seventy-five feet you're taking away from somebody's property, or actually the rest of the property, and it's all a bit taxing. So that's why I brought up, well, they put it in current use.
It says the risky take down, being on short term.
So you're saying that all wetlands are considered current use regardless of size?
No, no, I'm saying that you can put the wetlands into current use, regardless, it's done that with ten acres. A dry land usually has ten acres, I think it is anyway, but a wetland doesn't have to be, but if you have a buffer around it, that's dry land. And that'd be added into the wetlands, some of the current use. Are the, which doesn't sound right.
The legislative, that buffer, that buffer is not supposed to be touched either. That's supposed to be.
You, yeah, right, you can't, you can't actually do anything, you can't even mow it.
Well, the wetlands is in current use. I'm not talking about state-owned property or anything like that. If somebody has. Say a ten acre lot, and they have three acres in the middle that's flat, yeah. You're saying seventy-five feet all the way around that could be added to it? I'm saying can be.
Point of order, maybe fifty.
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet, they changed it from seventy-five to fifty.
They didn't argue?
I think so.
I mean, it's a meeting of seven.
It's seventy-five feet, yeah.
The, the idea is that the buffer is there to protect the wetlands, it's part of the. The natural, the order is to use the wetlands, the erosion that comes from them, from the dry land in the wetlands, to attempt to protect them. Um, and the thought of this, Scott, getting to it, it seemed. It seemed overly burdensome to the property owner if they're not able to, if they have to pay taxes on land.
But who's making the, is this a warrant article?
Yes, if you vote on the town.
So, so the town would be saying that nothing can be done within the fifty or seventy-five foot.
If the town votes it in.
Why would we do that?
Well, that's the plan.
Um, it's still on the, you know, it'll be still on the planning board, part of it there, we haven't had a public hearing on yet. But this is what's proposed, the possibility of mission, and again, that thing about the surgeries came up this way, I just brought it up here. We're discussing the amendment here at this meeting.
Couldn't have livestock, you couldn't farm it, you couldn't mow it, you couldn't do any, that's being proposed by, being discussed by the planning.
We are discussing.
I don't think it's our decision, I, I, it would seem to me that taxation is basically set by the state in terms of current use.
Say that for the public hearing, do you want some public hearing? I brought it up, yeah, we definitely wanted to say that your meeting, I'm just saying that. We'll be having a public hearing on, on the ninth of January, as to what actually goes in under the warrant there, but I just wanted to know. Your opinion on this first, before we have that public hearing, so I can bring that up and say, it probably can or it probably can't be.
Without it was public input, we're not supposed to react.
Interesting question.
Okay, thank you, I'll leave it at that.
Anything else? Seeing none. County Cheshire Administrator Chris Coats. And friends?
And friends, and friends, and friends. Any questions, you can say right if you want, that's my mind. I know we're here to talk about EMS, but I wanted to share with you a document, you've seen this, but I'll share it with you again. And I dragged along this house, I only have three of them, so you guys get it. Um, you have the clips, not that. We can share, what it shows you is that since twenty nineteen, since the last six years. We compared all other counties with where we've taxed to be raised and where we've been in to that. And over that period of time, uh, we've raised taxes, taxes we raised increased by zero point five percent or over, uh, just over a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, and we find that we're the lowest actually, counting that same time, we continue to grow. And continue on ways to do projects, but I just thought I would share that because we're proud of the fact that we're able to balance it, not every year, and I've said that for years. Uh, to anybody that will listen, that every year it's a new challenge, and this year is probably one of the biggest challenges we've ever come across, but. The last six years, we've taken great pride in trying to come up with a budget that works and continues to do whatever we need to do with certain communities, so I just wanted to share that.
Good job.
Yeah, I think so. So, the, I'm gonna start off, and then I'll hand it over to the chief. Um, but it's about Cheshire EMS, we want to thank you for the opportunity to come here, really talk about where we are and how we're moving forward. We're proud of the fact, you're gonna hear words like continuum of care. That we've been able to put together three phases to ensure that our, the communities that we respond to, so wanting to be one of them is cared for. Whether it's, you know, you know, SmartWise and the wheelchair service that they provide that we support. Whether it's interfacial transfers or nine-one-one contracts or backup contracts, we're proud of the fact that, um, within a year's time. We've been able to put a product on there that we stand by, we're proud of, we think it's a quality service and it meets the needs of our, our community at the highest level. Um, as you know. And I look at Jack when I say this, we, we didn't ever think we were going to be in this position, but we found ourselves in that position. And, uh, then we actually continued to look forward to see what that meant. You know the history, because I've told you it multiple times, but the bottom line is, we, we, we decided to move forward. We worked, we were at that first year, we were actually in our second year, but this is the first full year of service. And, uh, the number that we're reflecting of the need and service in the community, and I will tell you. That as we move forward, it continues to be there in communities that maybe we're back up to, that they're struggling to find a second. And so at some point, those are going to be issues that we're going to look at, we are looking, we're prepared to step into those situations. Um, I was telling the chief, uh, just a moment ago, your chief, um, that I received a document this week about. About Peterborough, some of the issues that, you know, some about the floodwater and some decision they're making over there around annual surveys, and it's worse. And what, you don't know what it means, it could be not, it could mean something about the zero, but the budget line for EMS is, is a concern, and so. Those are things that we're always looking at, but in each community, there's a different use that we're struggling with. I will tell you also. That we're going to talk numbers tonight, and we're going to give you a range, we're not going to give you a number, it's twenty, it's twenty-two and six. We'll give you a range where we think it's going to, where we believe it's going to land. But it's twenty-two and six we're talking about, for us to hit you with a number, which is not realistic. We, we took months upon months to really try to find out where, where they fill in that. With that being said, there's some things that could alter that on multiple levels. We can have some level of inflation during that period of time, we don't know, we've got costs that go up. On the flip side of it, we're working on the state level to increase. Um, uh, working with Representative Hunt and others to increase the prices to pay more. We have a bill that was presented last year, they, they're in study right now, but we, we understand that it's going to come out of study and that there's going to be a. A bill moving forward that's going to say, this, you need to increase it by this percentage, last year was a three hundred and fifty percent increase that was presented. They said, slow down for a second, do the crisis. But that's only a small part of the budget, the other part of the budget is Medicare Medicaid. And we're working on a national level, with our national organization, we're putting three motion forward on our national association of counties. To help them, then both, because their base out of D C can work with people like Senator Jean and across on both sides of the aisle. To, to help us fund certain things, look at Medicare, Medicare, if we can get Medicare rates pumped up, we can argue with the state to get Medicare rates pumped up. And that's going to help everybody, not just Cheshire EMS, but everybody. So those are a lot of unknowns that are out there, and we are constantly looking at ways to how we, how we can continue to, you know. Generate more money, and what we're telling everybody, everybody's paying. Everybody has to pay for the service, that's just the reality of the place. Um, our numbers, I'm proud of the fact that when we started to where we are today. Our numbers, and I can talk about that down the road, have increased, and we're, we're billing at a certain level, and our receipts were down here. And now we've inched up, uh, um, I think from where we started to where we are, a good amount, and I. Just see us continuing to have that inch up a little bit more, so that could be a factor as we move forward too. There's a lot of unknowns, is what I'm saying, so you're going to hear a lot of data from us tonight, in a short period of time, then we'll talk numbers. And, um, one little thing, I'm gonna hand this out. Uh, to conserve paper, because, uh, I mentioned our clerk is here, on both sides. So when you open this up, just go like this, and that's the easy way, because I was like, all right, what would you really, and I said, no, just go like this. So I'm gonna hand it out, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Chief Carter, and he can introduce everybody, and, and open it.
Thank you very much for having me, and allow me to take some time, so we can go through the room, we can parrot back, Chris touched on, uh, yes, me to kind of explain some of the stuff that's been taken into the service, like, through the operationally. To provide better service. Um, we've mentioned the staffing, um, but within Cheshire County and abroad. Um, I will say that we're full, most commander staff, right now we're at forty-eight, um, we would, uh, write a down today, thirteen paramedics full-time. Uh, we'll give our programs for an inserted one. Um, so right now, we have myself, we have the two deputy chiefs, Ed Atkins and Daniel Bishop, operations and clinical, and. We have, uh, thirteen full-time paramedics. It's full-time, and the rest of our staff, we have eighteen E N T, just now we have two thirty-one in the areas. Uh, you have our staff, we've all there. Um, thankfully, we have our human resources department with Tim May, actively searching out some of the best in the area, always looking for additional people there. And as we get adult, we provide primary nine-one-one response, medical community, paramedic intercepts, and also on, uh, emergency boards. I have numbers in years, um, I talked to him, Scott, this morning, and he's actually up closer to the twelve thousand runs this year for wheelchair and ambulance. Um, as the pretty of this is on four qual, we've got eleven thousand seventy-three months. If we think of what that means, that people are feeling, some of the weight that takes off of, you know, for non-merited transportation, for some of the other ambulances and things like that, it's, it's absolutely huge. Our training has gone leaps and bounds, we utilized a lot of San Francisco grants, um, to raise awareness for trainings. Uh, we're holding monthly trainings, we're working towards on shift trains. Uh, we have, uh, multiple members of Swan with our department at our training, and we're just continuing to grow that. Um, one of the changes that was recently made was the division of resources with the deputy chiefs. So we added the deputy chief of clinical services and operations, we can try to really focus on making sure that we're bringing a lot of things, be everything probably. We've done multiple things within the communities, C P R trainings, um, data card, city programs. Uh, how we can create, uh, clean tanks, we've been working closely with them, one of the major pushes that we've been making is in. P T S D, um, and prompt responsive trainings. So that we're trying to understand some of the places where people are coming from in your life, and what has brought them to. Where they are today, and how we can be more. Understanding of those types of reactions that people may or may not have, uh, which I think is. Incredibly important, and something that not a lot of places are focusing on. So, that's enough about us, um, about three quarters way through the packet here, I get into the nuts and bolts of Swan data. Uh, all of this is active, um, I compiled all of this on the thirteenth of December. Uh, so the first chart here, you see is your age and gender and age. Uh, you can see throughout Cheshire County, we did a study with, um. Forgive me if I forget Tim May, but he did a nice presentation, we won a whole bunch of, um. Things that we're going to be facing, it's a lot of the aging population, um. Tranquil populations in different communities, and what that looks like, and what impact it's going to have on our EMS service. You can see our average, you know, our highest number of calls for the population, uh, eighty, eighty-nine years old, it's something to be aware of. Um, the next one I'm very proud of, our full-time on that path. Um, so. I broke it out, and you can see the chart there, the town below, our average shoot time for calls in Swansea is one minute, twenty-seven seconds. Basically, what that means, when a pager goes off, within one minute and twenty-seven seconds, on average, we have an ambulance leaving our bay. And signing on, responding to that emergency. Our average response time in the town of Swansea is seven minutes, twenty-four seconds, and transport, uh, thirteen minutes and thirty-five seconds. You can see the, uh, Manhattan ninety percentile of response times, twelve minutes, thirty-six seconds. Take that for what you will, there's a lot of very large, vast rural areas in Hampshire, but I think it is telling that we're meeting our exceeding expectations in the state of the country. Uh, the next chart there, it gives you a breakdown of when we're seeing calls. Uh, one of the things that we're looking at in the very near future is, do we need to put up impact trucks? We're looking at the impact of, you know, interfacial transfers, and what time of day are those occurring? Um, when are the calls occurring in your community, and are we appropriately staffed at the right times to meet those demands? And if not, do we need to add additional resources just at specific times? Maybe it is a time, middle of the night, you're not necessarily seeing that many calls, we can move one of those resources to change it to a, a certain other part, part of the day. Uh, so the next one is just some of the, the events that have been done in, uh, down Swansea, for the county town's touch trucks, uh, we've gone forward in the workshop. The Swan Hall, all the home base, the district, thank you very much for the invite on that, that was great, uh, Long Bell, uh, CPR class. Uh, the Devil Valley, all they have in Marathon, and multiple, uh, high school football games, and then we're actually doing the. Parking games, um, if this started out, the hook is all over the night, we've done two of those so far with a four-hour endurance. We're kind of breaking down a lot of the information that we pulled from that control that everybody draws in the ministries, and the population. Increased demand of healthcare facilities and providers, we're working extremely closely to guard exposures. Um, man, not, um, health services, to see if we can even identify ultimate transport destinations, to take some of the pressure off of our local emergency departments. Um, whether or not that means. Where, if it's not a, a, in a two emergency, is there, can we call in resources to get that person to a safe place? Um, or to a safe place where they can talk to somebody instead of taking up a bed in the emergency department. Um, staffing issues throughout the area, uh, we're working very closely right now with Winchester ambulance to try to help their chappie. Um, and, and anybody else who, who has asked for it. Um, in Winchester, we've been, if they only have one member on their ambulance, we'll send one of our providers to. Staff their ambulance, so that their ambulance can get out the door and serve the people of their community. Uh, they don't have anybody on their, their ambulance that they, we're calling in an extra truck and putting up an additional truck in the town of Winchester. And sitting in their town, so that their community members can maintain that level of excellence and, and rapid response to patients. That's not taking a duty truck or putting up an additional truck for that. There, there's a lot of staffing issues in, in the area, especially for ambulance and EMS providers. Um, and then increased call waiting time on task, due to distance to travel. Thankfully, we're located near in Swansea, so our, our response times are a little bit shorter. But, you know, we have to look at, we're getting into the winter months, right, where cold and blue season. Um, calls are going to pop up, and they're going to take a long time to get there, how do we do that, where do we stay the ambulance, just to make sure that they're in. The appropriate place, the appropriate time, and again, that's where it's like that, that data of, okay, we're getting a lot of calls in this area at these times of days. What types of additional resources are we getting there as far as, you know, local rescue response, um, just trying to make sure that we're meeting that need. The billing data collection is something that I'm intimately proud of, uh, we did transition our billing department, we've implemented at least. Five or six different internal changes to make sure that all of that paperwork is done appropriately on time and getting straight up to billing. Uh, which is just hugely important. Um, we did start our strategic planning committee, been very successful, been there about four months, and you should have the plan put together, it needs to be up to that level for you to. Um, staffing, we're, we're doing very well, thankfully, you know, we do have that. Ability to, we have a decent way to pay, good benefits, and it's one of the only actually career EMS departments anywhere. The expansion, we do obviously, um, lots dealing with. Any local community that maybe knows that, we respond to that call, uh, this the other day, we responded to a motor vehicle accident, motor vehicle, in the town of Dublin. More than happy to help out, and I was proud to say that we have the resources to be able to help out our neighbors in that way. Um, at the same time, even when we're having discussions with staffing in Winchester. You know, um, if we're just sending that one provider down, or the, the whole truck, we have, that's an additional truck, we can't take away from what we promised to do. We have to add that additional truck to make sure, so it's a careful expansion, um, and it's just a support. And, uh, if you have any questions about any of that, uh, we'd more than happy, uh, to answer any of them, or anything that I didn't touch on.
Okay, um, I noticed your, uh, your time from out, out of your facility to on the road. It's very close to the city of Keene's, it's getting on me. Within seconds, which is good, and I've heard some good comments on your service, you know, I, I mean, it's, it's really good. Uh, yeah, look, I don't want to know this, are you, are your vehicles, are they leased, or do you buy them on all right?
Okay, apparently, we have. All our ambulances are purchased, um, will, are, and as we move forward, due to the fact that we're doing interfacial transfers. And because of the level of miles that we're being asked to go, no longer, they're just up to eleven and, and back. It's now New York, Albany, New York, uh, Boston, Mass, UMass, we were Connecticut, wherever, where, where, wherever there's a bed. That's where we're going, and, um, so that's adding more mileage, so. We'll be looking at, in the, in the very near future, as we look towards the budget and process moving forward. That we'll, we'll have to be looking at different options, at least we can be one of them. Or per, per, currently, we own the ambulance that we have, we have one more ambulance coming in that we, is paid for, they'll be coming in.
Early June, well, early.
Well, this is two years, two and a half year away, or whatever.
The current numbers are.
Yeah, I could know better, but, but we, it's been about two years, we've been waiting for this ambulance, so when it arrives, we'll be happy. So hopefully, it'll be there soon, and it's, and it's a.
A variatic unit.
Yeah.
Yep, uh, and I can tell you that part of our strategic plan is coming up with that capital improvement plan, uh, one thing that, uh, specifically Debbie Atkins, uh, we have a committee. On what are our options, right, what are our purchase prices, what are, um, we found with new cabin chassis lease options, what are. Um, are there vehicles out there that are turning, go at a reasonable price? Um, and I believe you have five or six different options that we're exploring right now. Because we are aware of the, even the high miles that we're on these vehicles. We had a transport yesterday, uh, yesterday, that went up to the Canadian border in northwestern Vermont. Uh, you know, it's.
Okay, one, one other, next one, point, uh. How many, how many towns are signed on, if you folks like town of Swansea is?
What, seven, seven primary towns?
Yeah, seven primary towns, which provide ALS intercepts, uh, for. Three additional, and then sometimes a fifth or six, depending on if the hospital has theirs up. And, uh, but ultimately, we will respond to every, every single town.
We have, we have, we have a relationship, a practical relationship with nineteen of the twenty-two towns in the city of Keene. So that means backup, meaning, you know, we're, we're going in, it's the city of Keene, we're backing them up, we're backing up the five towns they support. And, uh, then we have our own backup towns like Troy, Fitzwilliam, and others.
I was just wondering if we, if there's a chance of getting more of the towns involved, like we are here on.
I, I would think that you'll see probably within the next three to six months, maybe even sooner, two other towns coming on as primary.
So that's, that's, that, that will, the more, more towns that are on, it's, it's, it'll bring the numbers down a little bit.
We'll wait, we'll wait and see, but in reality, it's more, it's a higher level of revenue coming in, yes.
That's it.
Thank you. The extra vehicles they're talking about, the one you might have stationed in, uh, Winchester or other towns like that, are those vehicles you currently, currently have?
Yes, yeah, so we're, we're, we have a certain number of staff ambulances each day, we try to always have a reserve ambulance. If we were staffing Winchester that day, we would take that reserve ambulance, upstaff it, and then send it to Winchester.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So currently, we have seven ambulances with, uh, paramedic internship. We're mainly five.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Seven hundred to a million dollars for every ambulance, so.
All right, so that'll come back.
Uh, so thank you very much.
The quick thing to follow with, uh, the name of the people that gave us the, the oversight of what's coming our way, uh, that we do with themself, uh, we can plan five hundred. And, um, and again, you said, so, um. I staffed him, and he talked, touched on staffing, we've been blessed with the fact that, um, when we put something out there, we're getting apps. You know, and that's a, that's a good thing, and we're getting quality apps, uh, so, we're, uh, we'll continue to do that when we, when we have, and we're having. I'm not even saying, our, our hiring, our, we've been very stable at our hiring, I can't say anything more than that, because then I'll text myself. Um, uh, just a little bit on, uh, SmartWise, great partnership. Uh, Scott, Simon's is, is wonderful to work with, you need to, uh, understand that this was an individual that was doing thirty, forty runs a week. He's now doing, working forty, fifty runs a day. And that is helping us all keeping the, and keeping ambulances on, you know, at this, so that they can do nine-one-ones, or interfacial transfer, that's a blessing. One other thing, Swansea has, you know, their own backyard, five ambulances, and. One other thing, Swansea has their, their own backyard, five ambulances and a paramedic intercept. Not only that, we've only, no, I don't wanna wear one, one, maybe one time where we had to use. We had multiple calls where we had to get three ambulances in Swansea, but, you know, I'm just pointing that out. So if you go to the back. Here, I'll walk you through. You remember back when we, when we talked and when, uh, when, when we met up here, I believe. Um, some time ago, there was, um. Certain numbers that were going out there and we all knew that that was where it was, and I think someone was forward, I can't remember who it was, who it was that. Well, yeah, we used to say. Um, and so I will tell you that it's pretty simple for us, right? Now, we see. A rate of anywhere between forty-three and forty-seven dollars, uh, per miss. In, in the town, so you just multiply that and that's, that's what you're, you're getting for the, the numbers presented for you here. Now this year, that's, this is for twenty twenty-six. Next year, I think you're at eighty thousand and some odd. Um, because of the, these end processes that we did. But I wanted to put down below and, and show you that our billing right now, we're adding about two hundred and fifty thousand. When we started out, we were doing eighty thousand. Okay, and it's not, it just, it just is, the numbers weren't different. We got more, and to have more calls coming in, um, but we're, we're billing. We're, we're, we're billing a good number. It's the receipts, it's profit, what they're willing to pay. So, um, we believe that, and last month we actually hit two hundred and eighty thousand. So we don't know past real yet, but we're gonna watch it and we're gonna see if that number grows and that, that number could grow. Over the time, we play with the work they're all doing to ensure we get the, the information into our billing agency, which is Emax in Peterborough. And they get it out within twenty-four to forty-eight hours and then we kind of round it. We, we see the revenue. Primary towns, we're looking at primary town paying, uh, seven hundred and thirteen thousand and change. Backup towns, you'll have to pay moving forward, um, and that's just under five hundred thousand, four hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. Yeah, IDN funds, which you remember intra, intra. Delivery network, uh, integrated delivery network, um, is a funding mechanism that is focused on, um, delivering health and care, healthcare. And it's, uh, it's money that we can use that'll offset costs and we're utilizing that. We u- we utilized it last week, it's something that comes in. Uh, uh, regular basis and we feel this is important. It also helps with the cost moving forward. Um, and then Churchill Medical Center, yeah, is going to pay for the ambulances they are, and, but everybody across the board. Is going to have to pay for the services, like I had contracts and they're going to. The, that's how we're gonna be moving forward. So we've given you this document so you can see the different areas of amounts that. We can be laying a lot moving forward. Um, so that's. Questions. And it's always, I'm more than willing to come back and get those other questions that come up.
So what's the primary counts?
Hmm.
How many?
Sadly, currently, but I believe that, um, in the near future, you're gonna have to.
So if I, if I'm looking at this correctly, we're regardless of the, of the dollar that I, the rate, we're just under fifty percent. Of the, of the primary accounts in terms of what our contribution will be.
Yes. You're, you're, you're correct, you could base, yeah, because I'm based on the population, any population we let see your health. How many called in, in, um?
Ninety-seven. About fifteen percent of the population in Swansea gets empty, so. Fifteen percent. Call and have sense a day for a person.
Yeah, yeah. So that's where we're at, but we wanted to get you back now. So that you have knowledge of where we're going and how you're moving forward. You know, some of the things that we learned is that. You know, where you, they, the animal stuff race that we're gonna have to continually do, really putting a plan in place. One to two a year that we're, of the while, which at least are probably one, and we'll see from there what it means, um, because. And we never, we never. I don't know if it's, I can't, I don't know if it COVID, but we were told that either runs mostly were, and it showed that there's, that it was obviously a lot better. But it never showed that we're gonna be going as far as we're going. And that's just adding miles on, and it's also taking an ambulance off. That, you know, that's, that, that's a day. If you're going out to New York, that's an ambulance loss for the day. But it is what we need to do to get those, you know, to get the, the individuals.
When is the, when is the in-life of an ambulance, how many miles is there, a set mileage that ambulance has done? Uh, you know, once it hits so.
I, I'm gonna have Ed talk to that, but I will tell you one thing that I've come to know that. There's, there's an in-life for long distance and there's an in-life for short distance. And so you can, you can switch something down, unstop, like Ed, why don't you come over here and just.
It's very simple for us. We're doing about fifty thousand miles a year per vehicle. Um, we've got, our intercepts obviously are, they run both of them, so the mileage is way lower on those. Our plan is to do a three-year rotation on all the vehicles starting this year. We have two coming in. Oh, one for sure, two hopefully, and then the intercepts as well down the road. Um, we think a hundred and fifty is a fair number to give her these things, because we'll still get decent trade value on. Versus something that's two hundred and four, it'd be, uh, New England is not good for vehicles, is everybody.
Twenty-three years.
Every three years, that's planned.
And we, and we initially had said five. Because we didn't count on what, what we're seeing with the interfacility, no one. I've talked to so many different people, everybody's facing the same situation where the mileage they're putting on, not just in here, but across the state.
They're going as, so specialized facilities, like we took one to Maine, uh, just two days ago. You know, we didn't anticipate on going to Maine or Albany, New York, good weather, that's almost an eight-hour turn. So we're racking the miles up.
Your success on staffing, do you feel that? Why do you feel you're so successful on staffing?
I think it's, I, I, you guys can jump in too, but I think.
That's it, money?
People, no, I think it's, I think one is. I think some, some people just wanna do EMS work. They, they don't pay a lot of times, and you can have them too if I'm wrong. But a lot of times, you know, you're, you're fired in EMS, and a lot of people just wanna focus on this, and this is giving them a creative focus. On that, I think that you've got somebody that comes in and all of a sudden, they are, they're, they're getting paid a competitive wage. They're getting retirement and they're getting good healthcare, and that seems to matter to a lot of people. We're getting a lot of people. Uh, not a lot, but we've got a good amount of people that are coming across rivers and also across lines over in Massachusetts coming in. Because they come on for twenty-four, they go home, they come back down, they work for twenty-four, and they're done for the week. And then there's another shift, and another shift, and another shift, and, and they, they like, they like that, and, um, they know their check's gonna be there. They know the healthcare plan for their children are gonna be there. And, uh, so I think we've created a, a, an opportunity for people to be successful.
So you're fully staffed now?
Almost, we, you know, you, you. Close, like, one or two people at the most, but I was talking to, to the HR director today, and she said, yeah, we have people on the pile. That have given us their application, we just didn't have the time, have a position for them, so we'll look at them, visit them. But, you know, the other thing is that I think as a, as a, as a county, countywide. We need to come up with a, an answer of, of all these other, these, these local, that range, right, this line that. Struggle to maintain the staffing and, you know, is there more? That we can do or not? I don't have the answer to that, but I think that's a discussion at some point down the road, because of the effects as well. When we, we, when we took this on. The message we said is, we want everybody to be healthy because we don't, we don't wanna come in and take everything, we just wanted to support what leads to be supported. And then make sure everybody else is helping. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll come up here if you look at the term. What's the staffing requirements for the transport that you're talking about?
So. It depends on the purity of the patient or, uh. Typically, you have all two individuals, whether that be two EMTs. Um, it requires an advanced EMT, we'll send an advanced EMT if their patient requires a paramedic, we'll send a paramedic. Um, and occasionally we have extremely sick patients that are on ventilators, multiple infusions, things like that. That patient will have a paramedic as well as an additional providers in the back of the ambulance. Um, and, and that would be great.
Most of the time it's not a paramedic, it's a, it's an EMT or something?
I think for the interfacility transfer is probably about fifty-fifty, um, yeah.
The ambiguity that they're seeing means that there's gonna be more paramedics. Um, you know, it's gonna equal out because then it's generally, they're seeing a higher level of. Issues, you know, so that they have to have that level of care on, on board, is what you have told me in the past.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I live in Westmoreland, so it's not uncommon that if we have to pull one of our paramedics out and we're only down to one paramedic for me to have to come in and cover and. Make sure that we have that high level of.
But to know that you have today, you would start of the day with four paramedics on. I mean, I've been told by people that have worked in this line, in this area for a long time, that, um. That they had one paramedic sometimes working the whole county. Now, I don't, I only know that because of people that have been here doing that, Ed being one of them, and others, people, Mark, you too, it's that. So we're, we're very fortunate, we're staffing at a higher level to ensure that, 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 though, when those people are pressed for a, they answer that call.
So that influences your staffing and as to how many paramedics you have to.
We have a certain, we have a certain level that we need, I think currently we have twelve.
Yep, uh, we have just added the thirteenth today, got cleared by the authorities, uh, we have one for an orientation.
Uh, with fourteen, I think is our target.
Fourteen is our target, that allows us, uh, minimum of three per ship.
And so you have, yeah, I see, so you have this spare paramedic, so to speak, to pull off to, uh, give your transports, rather than pulling a paramedic off.
You're typically rotating, yes.
Yep. You always have that many.
That, that is the goal, is to always have at least one in-house to respond to a call.
Yeah, yeah, and we have, uh, a leadership level, we have two paramedics and an EMT.
Yep, both myself and Deputy Bishop are also paramedics.
So if you have four on or three on, you also have, you know, if, if it's called code.
Zero, zero.
We do a job on trucks.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I took that double call no worse during the other day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? And again, we're more than willing to come back at some point when you, after you've decided about this and.
What's gonna drive the rates?
Where, where we are, where we have. Advantages, if we have success, it's, it's either time. Pop, and if we're able to bump things up, yeah, then that's, that's the biggest issue.
One of the problems you told us about was, like, when you go on a call and a person doesn't wanna be transported to you. Basically, you don't get paid for that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Wasn't it like you show up and somebody doesn't?
Yep, so, yeah, um, so. And, and this is industry standards, any non-transport, so ambulances are basically under the Department of Transportation. They can't bill for non-transport, so we only bill for the call if there's a load of patients smiling and raised. But that's one of the, um, struggles that we face, is how do we recruit that cost? Because it, it does. Costs us money, right, and, and to attempt to help or, or whatever, but.
Uh, wasn't there a way that you guys are gonna try to work on that and how to recover your costs on that?
We are, we are, we, we had a few minutes last year. You know, we were able to, you know, do some things that we, we able to push through some, some, some things, uh. Last year, but I will tell you that, and, and, and Jack brought it up last week, and it's one of the movements that we're gonna bring down to Washington when we got in Marta that. And you wanna explain that a little bit about the, the language change?
Yeah, basically, the reason why ambulances are under the Department of Transportation is literally decades ago. All they did was pick up eyes and drive them, they provided no care. Today, any one of these ambulances can provide all of the care that you could get in an emergency room, which is why out of the. You had twenty-one cardiac arrests in town so far, I think, um. They don't have to go to the hospital, they can do everything they need to do at the scene. And so the archaic language in federal regulation that only allows reimbursement when it doesn't transport. It comes back to the days when it was merely, uh, a taxi driven by undertakers, right? I mean, literally. Um, and that history is all over the country. Uh, there are some exceptions for, um, uh, intensive level care. When you don't transport a patient, you can't save a life where there's a mechanism to bill, it's, it's somewhat, um, cumbersome. And, and, um, it doesn't happen a lot because it takes a lot of paperwork, uh. But we're working towards increasing the recognition that you can get the same care in the back of that truck that you get in any emergency room. Um, and, um, that's real pre-hospital care. And, um, so Chris and I have spent a lot of time in Washington DC and at the State House. Um, beginning to advocate for that and changing Medicare reimbursement rates, changing Medicaid reimbursement rates. Um, and it's gonna be an ongoing effort, um. Uh, even as, as we go forward, because it's really critical and, 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 uh. Just to huddle, you were talking about what's gonna affect the rates, well. You know, you can see from the, the budgets, it's ba- basically almost a six million dollar budget, you got five or six ambulances on the road. Uh, if, if, uh, if we negotiate a human contract or health benefits, well, that affects a little bit, we kind of project that. If our collection, our revenue from insurances is not what we expect, that affects it. But those are really the two, two things, uh, we either get more revenue from, uh, third-party insurers. Or we have to pick it up from the user, the delegation's been pretty clear that. They're not prepared to have this kind of diluted across the entire tax base of the county. Um, that has to be paid for by the users, and, and we start with that and, because. It's a big change in, in, in the price. Um, but we, we really don't have no choice, it's, it is what it is at the moment. We're at this evolution where, um, as the first county base in this agency in the Northeast. Um, we're really kind of breaking the ice because we didn't have any choice. We're facing an imminent collapse of EMS services for nineteen towns at one level or another. And, uh, obviously, we did what we did. Um. So these prices, uh, build in a bit for capital replacement of ambulances and, uh, and that sort of thing, so. Um, I mean, that, that's our hope. Um.
And. Just on a side note, um, I had the opportunity to, to meet with Senator Jean a few weeks ago here in King. And we talked about two hours and one thing she said she was, you know, if we are able to put language together. Then the three motions, I, 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 well, the two motions at a time, and there will be a third now. Um, she more than willing to, to move forward, and the other one I haven't talked about, just I wanna make you aware of, is the. Monies, uh, Southwest Fire Mutual Aid, um, their infrastructure in their communities is, uh. Is at a critical state, uh, end of life, and it's about a four-point-eight million dollar in, uh, in. Budget at need, and if they bonded for that, that means Swansea, whatever you're paying now, it would be a three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-and-fifty percent increase. In what you're paying. We've partnered with them because we updated our sheriff's dispatch down to four-point-four million. And we were able to find monies to grant to cover it. So, so far, we've br- we've been able to find, uh, through congressional spending requests. And through Governor, uh, Sununu's, uh, you giving, uh, giving us, uh, one-point-two million. Uh, towards, uh, out of our companies that he needed to, needed to bring down. We're at two-point, little, oh, just under two-point-two million of that four-point-eight have been raised and met with some people yesterday. That we are, we're gonna continue to do what we can so that, that the impact to the taxpayers and development, we can raise it, raise all those fundings through. Through, uh, to grants, hopefully, or at least a major portion of it.
One more question, uh, you have a, a kind of a mileage limit or how high you wanna reach out to a, have a full-time participant? Uh, what's your fifteen, maybe twenty miles, uh, from Swansea, from your base?
What do you mean participant?
Uh, for, yeah, for a full-time participant, like we. No, just a, as a town.
Well, I, I mean, I think, uh, because we're in Cheshire County and. Well, I I mean, I think, uh, because we're in Cheshire County and and all of this happened because of the Cheshire County State Representatives.
Yeah.
My bet is we would, uh, if not limit of the service to Cheshire County, but certainly be able to, uh, separate. Uh, as we do in other cities, um, the allocation of any resource that we spend outside of the county so that it's clear. That Cheshire County taxpayers aren't paying that kind of subsidizing other towns' units and services. And so, and that's one of the things we're trying to do is to make sure we allocate the costs correctly so that everybody knows what they're paying for. We try to find the best balance of how to spread that out, it's obviously it's an inexact science because you never know how many calls you're gonna get. And you don't know where they wanna be, and you don't know where they wanna go. Um, so, you know, we've had over a thousand. Uh, Swansea residents that we've had to respond to the nine one one call, we've had almost a hundred Swansea residents, which we've taken to. More different facilities because they wind up in Cheshire. And Cheshire can't do what that patient needs, so so they have to be transferred to a facility that can provide that care. And then, uh, so obviously, that's, that's obviously pretty important and, uh. Particularly with twenty-one cardiac arrests could be able to be on soon within seven and a half, I mean, that's a very good too. Um, so I I think you're in a great spot and I think Swansea was very, uh. Uh, visionary to kind of help host us and and allow us to do what we did. Um, I I think it's been a great benefit, hopefully you can, uh, see this kind of grow and prosper.
Jack, you want to introduce the other two promotions here?
Oh, sure, uh, uh, we just stand up, this this is the, uh, this is Claudia Stewart, she is the commissioner-elect. She's gonna be taking over my district and I decided not to run, and then Terry Clark is the carryover, uh, commissioner, um. So there'll be a third one, I'll skip DeMarano. Um, and, um, then those three will be carrying on, I'll, I'll begin my role as county treasurer. Yeah, so I'll still get to sign all the paychecks. I I don't know if that answers all the questions back.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, very good job.
Thank you.
It wasn't mentioned, but I'll mention it, uh, your Swansea fire crew under. Keith Matson worked with us very well, and they're the first, uh, the first advanced air that. So these are actually.
Fire station project cost estimated.
One side of the, uh, E M S world, the other side, so, uh, last couple of days, we. Project from D W has come together, so you have a pitch. Uh, of progressives, so the main number you wanna look at, in page one, look at is page twenty-three. And that also included the reference, very not just kind of looking at. So looking at a total, uh, including all soft costs, uh, insurance design, various factors. Um, about three point nine six, another. Uh, so a little bit higher than I think we wanted, but they did a good job, uh. Chipping their pencil, we're meeting with Katie and D W and Jay, uh, yesterday morning, we'll resume and. Talk about a few ideas that Jay and they had, um, which died down a little bit further, so I take between this and then. The other funds that we've been able to squirrel away, uh, I think we'd be looking at bond amount just under three million. And for reference, this total kind of all in number, which is like three point nine six this year. Was like five, just under five point three last year, so it's really significant decrease. Evidence all your hard words.
Just under three.
So some of those funds are saving annually the last several years, the fire station caper was your fund, about five hundred thousand. Uh, through Senator Sheen's office, we've got two hundred thousand for aggressively directed spending. And then each year, because the proposal that will spend some pretty good fund balance or it's general taxation, because probably won't have a long payment that.
That's why it's under the two million dollar, right?
And then the other piece to mention, one thing that, um, D W was a little nervous, that they have a design contingency in here. But usually the owner wanna carry a contingency, so I'm not factoring that in, but we still have. A little over four hundred thousand committed in the, um, investment age for unit funds, so I think you could. Keep that back and then the captain, not all, they're agents, recovery initiatives that came up. That wouldn't be the one article, those investment age funding.
Speak to it. Um, as Mark said, we were hoping for a little bit, well, we're in the. The really, the only area that surprised me was the site look, it was only under fifty thousand dollars in the last time. But we had an estimated cycle, and we thought we'd have a good job of producing the page and then. Working on just the flat portion of the site, so we didn't have that much work to be done. I think, uh, in talking to them, they may have, uh. Been a little more precise in how they estimated the site works this time, and also, uh, that majority of things are the same, still have to build a. Base on, so I, you know, foundation, so I had to do utilities and stuff like that, that are. Part of me like, my, I'll, bigger, it's building is definitely smaller, so that that's reflected in one of the others, and if you, if you do a. A line item by line item, uh. Comparison, uh, you can see that in many cases, this estimate versus last year's estimate is much is lower. And we made a big savings by going to wood framing instead of the, uh, the, uh, structure of. Uh, the building structure aside, uh, last year was six hundred sixty-five thousand and this year with framing is three hundred and three. So you would say a couple of thousand there, there's forty thousand saving quality, you know, a lot of it is. Is because the building's smaller and there's a little less involved there. The only other, the only thing that's not, uh, shown here is the, but it is an material of. The option, if we decided to put off buying the elevator, it's part of this cost, we can save about a hundred thousand. Uh, we wanted the elevator because that will involve storage, moving things up, up and down stairs, and then safe costs later, yeah. In a serious way, so. Uh, you know, it's still in here, but it's eight block down of the elevator and the cheaper the cost, the electrical systems, et cetera, et cetera. Bringing up to seven hundred thousand. So that's, that's the only legal room that we identified inside what they turned between Monday and today. They, uh, might lie, fuck, no, not what they can do to, but this is canon, Katie was very, very helpful. In opening a piece of writing, saying, we really need this, we really need that, and she shaved off. What you're seeing is about four hundred thousand dollars less than what they showed us on Monday.
Oh, you you brought it down to.
And Katie's, that's a lot of.
Can you go back to the site where, you know, you said, do you, is that what stands out to me? Six hundred and forty, three thousand dollars for the site where over there with that property, is that? Is that, did you say that you were surprised at that too?
Well, we had thought, and I I think the other members, I think you were telling, uh. That they agree, that we thought that this new design, by occupying the flatter area of the site.
Correct.
Would eliminate some of, some of the proposed site work, it was.
Correct.
Now, so we thought we'd save more than a hundred thirty thousand. And it was a hundred thousand until, on Monday, that was a hundred fifty thousand, but they went back and they were really terminal more often, so.
Were you saying the last one was seven hundred, seven thousand?
Last year, Jimmy, last year, Jimmy, this was seven hundred ninety-four thousand, three seventy-five.
Okay.
This year it's six forty-three, three forty-five, so it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars less.
Right.
Than last year, we were hoping for more.
Correct.
And I love to, you know, I, I mean, uh, Scott and Mike and. And Jack, and we were all, we talked about what we might do with the architectural plan, and we were all feeling that we. Done enough to have a lot of savings there.
Hmm.
Um, so, I I look at the, the stuff they have down here, I have, I I don't know enough about. The building trades to, to look at the breakdown of the site work here, and it's, it's reasonable, but everything that I listed here is stuff you gotta do, so.
Yeah. It just stood out to me, the first thing I looked at, I thought that was a lot, because I'm picturing a flat piece of property, you know, and there is more to it, I understand that, utilities and.
Yeah, I mean, I.
And all that.
I I looked at demolition and I said, why do we have to demolish, another guy get the asphalt out there, and that nine hundred dollars, that's all that is, nine hundred dollars, get the asphalt.
And I thought we talked about the town, maybe our our people doing some of this, if it was possible, didn't we talk about that?
We did, and we mentioned that to them, and Michael was a little worried about how that might work with the.
Well, it's just if they're doing that, they're not doing other things, and probably would have to rent equipment, so there's still is a cost, but absolutely, that is an option.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean, there are ways that, you know, we could, we could try to figure out what the town could do. For the cycle of especially, um. But we have to look at the cost to the town to do that as well.
That's right.
What we might say for voters, I mean, it it's like, you know, we have funds to pay. The D W workers to do this, they're not doing something else, they have to do that with overtime some other time, so I I I don't have the answer for that, this is. This gets to town management.
Something we can surely look into, we could get every judge, and we should have sent him and shown this number and shown what has to be done and. See what his reaction to it, he could sit here and say, I could do that for three hundred thousand.
Perhaps he could, the only worry I have, of course, is that it all has to be coordinated by the, the.
The people that are doing.
Construction engineer, and so that, it's all, it it's not a people, that people are doing it, moving dirt here where they're expecting dirt to be.
That's right, that makes sense.
And so there's administrative costs to do that, and and that's all I can say, I don't know enough about this. I don't know if anybody else wants to try to, you've all seen the breakdown?
I haven't seen it, no.
Are you planning on meeting the whole committee, knowing over this, or us by you now?
I don't know. Basically, we wanna talk about both, we, we, certainly, you should probably need to get this, talk about how to sell this. Uh, and talk about, like, I mean, the plan was to start posting those videos, I had to make a video up about this. The cost, there's a lot of the final video, and I was thinking that, and I meant I, to ask the committee for ideas and, and, you know. Kathy's been really good on ideas, so, these things, uh, looking at. Do we just make this video comparing this proposal to the last year's proposal and show how we lowered the cost, or do we? Part of other ways to present the money, we, we, we focus on how much we need to bond and and. And 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 so on, and not mention the, the whole, uh, cost of the town. Um, it seems a little dishonest to do that, but on the other hand, that's what the taxpayers have to pay for, so.
What was the complete comparison, I didn't see from last year, what was?
Last year was five million, two hundred eight thousand, this year three million nine.
But surely, we're gonna be asked for three, right?
Well, the total article is gonna have a three point nine.
And last year the bond was one million. So we find out a bond that's over a million dollars less than what was proposed last. So, obviously, it's money, but we knew it was gonna be money, and the question is, do I have money for the town, like, too much money? And there was no, there there's some issues, we we talked about issues of. By the time we get this going, we're gonna be constructing during the winter months, which means that it might take ten months to do it instead of eight months. Or something like this, which might increase the cost, uh, the question was, do we wanna. Focus on setting the construction to begin in spring of twenty twenty-six, in which case we can get it done quicker. Uh, but then again, we don't know what the prices are in the spring of twenty twenty-six. So we will, I see the way. Did I represent all that accurately?
Yep, either you, we, hopefully not to start in the winter, but you might, prices might go up in the meantime, so it might. Might not happen, so you hope, but.
Yeah, I have one question, I'm only, uh, since it's all within one building and we're concerned about diesel, uh. Do you know if there's proper ventilation provided by the branch?
Absolutely, they, that's, that's what we understand, we're using here.
Okay, what, what is it included?
Called a pl- climate event? Climate event?
Costs thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars, by the way.
That's similar to what the team has, uh, they hook up pipes for.
It's exactly what he has, yes.
Okay, they hook up pipes, the exhaust goes up to.
It captures it all and pushes it outside.
Okay.
And that's what we understand as for, yes.
It's kind of the industry standard, I think, that was the final one.
Hey, well, if this were to be approved, what would be the delay to push construction up to the winter?
Um, the, the reason that they talk about a delay is that we need to set it out for bid, so we have to do the engineering now. And the preparation, final, the architecture. Or the conceptual level, high, high conceptual level. Yeah, so it could be expedited, we don't know, and we might start in September, but the project would still have to continue through the winter. So they've allocated fifty thousand dollars for winter construction, added costs of. The elements, although we don't have much to learn anymore. It is one area where we might get a say that we don't, you know, especially. By the way, the bottom side.
So what what's the bid period, what what's the estimated time for her to finish? To get the construction?
We, we haven't, as far as I know, we haven't committed to her or D W being involved in the group, talking about a bid process for. They want, they wanna be involved, obviously, but it depends on who folks, will you be able to put this out, it's equal, first of all. D W's not a construction manager, and we assumed Katie would continue to oversee this, but. I mean, it's not, we have a contract where we do that yet, so she hasn't responded, she hasn't told us what the cost.
Well, I think, I think her cost, her cost was estimated.
Right, so.
I think we're pretty well tied to her. You're right, we're not under contract for it, but, but so we have, on March thirteenth, the day after the vote, when vote passes, we're all excited and calling. She gets us the scope of work to, that costs us a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That's ending.
We sign on that.
Yeah, that's.
We have gotten, uh, scheduling, I would expect, a few months, two or three months, if you like, as based on just, even just doing this update took, what, month, three months? Uh, it'd be months, thirty days, we'd be signing contracts.
Mid-June.
For, yeah. And then I'm ready to start on August, July first, so.
That will add to contractors, et cetera, et cetera, so if if it's not approved, then they can't go out. You know, people might be busy already, so the contractors might be busy already. Uh, we, we might find ourselves unable to nail people down to work that early, as we know, as we want.
Very true.
That was, as you know, from your house, right?
Don't mention it.
Next year we can mention it, so, you know, that's, that's where we are, and. Uh, I think the committee wants to be involved in trying to. Promote this, and we have these rescheduled open houses at the fire station, number two. The second, third, and fourth weekends in, in January, just on that video we promote, and we'll. You can start doing that, and start making posts on Facebook and playing links to these videos, and I will try to produce something that. Reflects these costs, I might have to hold the people in committee to, to get that going, but, um. That's, that's our plan right now, of course, we're gonna, because holiday coming up, so. Uh, while this is gonna, gonna happen, hopefully, we'll start promoting this in early January. We'll start promoting this in early January. And. If they're, you know. Back and forth. We're gonna. We'll see what the town says. And we're gonna have, you know, great ideas we had about putting the plans up in town hall next to the court's office. And the uh learned that we can post things on the uh. Uh these people's public interest uh site, and as well as on town Facebook. And as long as the community pays. And we'll, we'll get the word out. Much as we can, in terms of those videos that are are made. Process, but also, we would um. Hope that members of the committee will respond to people that do comments and talk it up among their friends and and really go for it. And and anyone else who feels they don't wanna do it, we can sell my one on one list, we might, might get a bunch.
We we paused it both yesterday and I think earlier about whether it was a choice or not to go forward, I don't get a vote on that, but. I would think we should, because it's not like if we came back at six million, I could say, oh yeah, I guess maybe not gonna pull it, but. I think for the fire department that needs it, for the community that needs it, for the people that work in the town hall. That eat those trucks out of there, I urge it would be that we go forward with it and give it our best selves. Sales and promotion, and the the work the committee's done so far, I think the most important part is coming up, which is selling it, we're gonna be able to talk to the community.
I I'll share that, I uh when I saw this figure on Monday, the larger figure than what you see right now, I was. Kind of depressed. And after we had the meeting, uh I was hopeful that maybe we knocked a couple hundred dollars off, but. When it came back with four, four hundred thousand plus off.
Could you briefly just explain how you did that? Just briefly, some of the bigger items, you think you take away, did you take away big items?
No, one of them was the the owner's estimate, uh contingency, owner's estimate contingency fund, but it wasn't much. Much money, the other was, we just reminded them that. They had put a whole bunch of stuff in there for uh some materials that have to be, have to be done, uh but they hadn't actually cost them out individually. So they put two hundred thousand dollars down, and then they, we asked them to list. The amounts, the fees, the things that have to cost, it came up to less than a hundred thousand. So there's a hundred thousand we saved right there. And Katie pushed them on that, and she pushed on a few other things, uh they had, they had set up the firewall. Differently, uh with much longer uh extra uh. Wallboard and stuff that that had to be there to make a firewall between the fire area and the administrative area. And they had, they had made it much longer than it needed to be and and not in the right place. So it was, they were placing the first floor, the second floor, and we pointed out that they could go. Save some money there, and I think that was reflected, they were very eager to. Get that input and go back and see what they could do to limit the cost. So everybody, Katie, the D W were trying very hard to limit the cost that we. We were looking at without being, and I asked them again this morning, I said, are you? Are you confident that this is gonna be enough, you know, not over, it's underestimated what it is, and this is their third time.
And you got rid of the four number and you made it to three, so I think that was the big number.
No gimmick by us to get it under, they get it to three.
Get it to three, that's all.
Well, you know, we we had told Katie that we wanted to do this for.
Thirty five.
Five, most four.
Right.
And the construction, as you can see, the construction is only a little bit more than three hundred and five.
Yep.
So it's a part that's throughout these, all these processes, always been frustrating to me, when you get that construction number, and it looks good, yeah, three million, that's what we want, and then always. Always, if you add in all the the soft costs and the general conditions and the insurances and the contingencies before you know it.
Yeah, so last year there were five hundred and twenty thousand dollars of those soft costs, and this year, three hundred thousand, some of the soft costs from last year, figuring into the big picture too, so. But so they they did a really good job of trying to estimate this better without a lot of extra stuff, and that's one reason we live a little bit better. But again, if anything we can do with, you know. To to lower the labor costs. That that's the one area I think we might be.
Yeah, I think we could say, yeah, I think that number's pretty high, but. Oh my.
Well, if you look at the, if you look at the breakdown, a lot of that stuff they have to do. And and that includes things like site improvements, whether they're putting in uh paving asphalt and, you know. No, not say, no, not they, they're looking at uh. Uh landscape, so it's the plantings and the other things, that's all part of the site. Uh we can not do the plantings and figure the plantings will be figured funded some other way.
That's like getting after the planning board.
But those are like, those are like forty three thousand dollars for that, that's, that's nothing.
Seventy five feet.
All invested species.
Yes.
And Paul's going, you know, he already estimated on the water loss, they estimated uh running uh. Uh. Two hundred and ten linear feet of of water pipe, and uh. Uh, I don't know. I don't know if all that, like, they have to be done, uh but. They're working on, plan showing where the hydrid is right now at the edge of the area, and it seems to be even more. Stuff like that, but that's, that's a, you know, fifty six thousand dollars almost of of water. The water pipe. And I remember on the last year's plan, we were only, I had fifteen thousand dollars to come to the center. I I also, I didn't look at the details of how we connect that most of the different sites, and it's pretty much the same. But I I think we go as much as we can with this, and now we have to suck, that's.
Yeah.
Put enough into it.
Yeah.
You can go forward.
Yeah. That's what we wanted, but if you guys were to say, whoa, then.
I think you came in right where we were hoping, I, I didn't, I don't, I don't think that number's terrible. It's nice. Now.
Hey. I'm just hopeful the bidding process will drop the ten percent of their amounts.
Yeah, but that's possible too.
Definitely.
And what happens then if? We we save money out of the general fund that we can use for all the time in the fire station, or is that what happens if we? If the, if we don't have to spend, we have the bond, obviously, we'll, we'll have to spend more than the bond, but if we don't have to spend some of the other funds, is that how that works?
No, you don't even have to spend all the bond, you can pick up the unused bond.
So then you don't have to pay as much for the service.
Right. Correct, yeah, so it's, that's just the top, think of it like the top line, that's all for us. If we put out the bids and it comes in at three million, we could only borrow up what we think we're gonna need.
I don't really care for that.
Hey, you want, so I think that's a very so.
Very so.
Didn't you wish you had that number before?
Good.
Exactly. Uh, I almost feel like calling the the guy who did the work on my house, who who goes to watch the fire station and say, hey. Say something, you're just gonna. Yeah, I haven't got to go again.
Want to breathe it? I think it's a lot of work that you all did, of course, so.
He doesn't have a follow up, there, he got a plan, having a, you know, I was gonna bring that up and. Boy could even ask, he already had his plan of the open house, which is, I think it's a great idea, the video. I think that's gonna be the important thing right now, is to get it out there and. Let people ask questions about it, you know, so they're not just going to vote and see.
We need a a special town meeting about it, I mean, a special session, we can, if people are meeting, we've had one. One non-committee member show up to our meetings the entire time. Uh, always publish it better, disclose.
That's gonna be the important thing, is getting out that. The bond here.
That's the same thing, that's a bond hearing deliberative or the the public meeting aspect, so I think it's, it's the others, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, there's a little recession, that that's, there are a lot of things in a little recession, we're gonna, we're gonna beat to that. But what I'm saying is, we we have these open houses at the fire station, if you can publicize it as well, then we can talk to people there. But, um. Any ideas what I should put in this video cost?
Twenty five percent less than whatever percentage was last time.
I would say, I might not review the final, I mean, it's the final number, but it might not be after those bid, I mean, everyone understands the bidding process, so we could just add that in there, that. Even though it stakes that may mend it. The bid.
Well, um. Many members were here, um. A meeting at Christmas, between Christmas and New Year's, something like that, would you be allowed?
I don't know.
Anyway. Right? See, we can go with that.
Great. Thank you. Again, yeah, nice.
This is town work review that is needed.
Going my uh base line.
That was all.
Yeah, are you gonna prepare what? Um, she's a little old, the mother, and.
In my office this afternoon, and.
Yeah.
And is this the, for Katie, this is the right one, all right, just a better on your way out, present for you on the printer, so.
But I just want to share that. You wouldn't have had to read more. You know, good job.
What what's happening? You come in with this very. And you never hope what they got, they're not from that. So you're never open that.
That was my petition, Jimmy.
Well, I think it's time to break it up and then see what's in that.
Well, that's. But the tissue, and I'm gonna put interview people, come over this next meeting, I got a few more.
And then you got that.
They don't got a lot to do.
Don't touch it, you touch it, you mix up with it. Don't stand for this receipt. Crazy Simon. Little Jimmy, no!
Wow. How many more you see inside the whole town?
Four more people's out, but I don't know. So, when I get over.
Next meeting is on Monday.
And these, and these are right?
These are right. You like the fun Cheryl, I don't know, I don't know how long she's been working here, so. I thought she did a real good job, and I hate to start slinging it up, yeah, I'm glad she got it.
Next meeting is on Monday.
Monday?
Cause we have holidays on next Wednesday.
Oh, so it's gonna be sold Monday to the by Thursday?
Monday the thirtieth, not, not this coming Monday.
They all take off the holidays, like I don't, I will, I would have been in business, but nobody wants to show up.
No such thing as a holiday for you, huh?
That's right, buddy.
Mark, very thought.
Ready?
After the holiday party, you're you're helping host.
Yeah.
Tell me this one. Their character.
Model your comment?
Yeah, I don't mind. The tip, very thought.
Oh, the tip, yeah.
Very thought.
There you go. Any other, yeah, I'm gonna approach it.
Other business. Uh, so the town hall entry, right, the door is open, so then you can mount.
The floor is in?
Floor is in. All the trims down, all the, all the trims down here, but looking very nice.
How's your door key? Don't we, are we doing the door pass key?
About outposal here for such a system.
About a card.
So, yeah, we're gonna.
These are installed, whatever.
That was the same, right?
So this is, they gave two options, this is the cheaper option, which is just a punch, punch code. Also a more expensive option for flashing badges, but this is. It's it's more, it's not like the fire department where you just push it open, there is some tracking, so there was some incident, and just see, okay, who's the last one to punch it. We can, we can look back.
This has. Well, then you're still going into the alarm anyway.
So it'll only take a while.
Is it one number for everybody? Does everybody have a different number?
Everyone has their. Hundred users.
So if you, if I had my number and I went and I told Joe Schmo. My number, and he went in there, I'd be, I'd find out, you you didn't find out, he'd say, Jimmy, does someone come in there using your number? Yeah, but you'd come looking for me.
Well, they would not.
Would, yeah.
All the cameras are.
But how do we protect that? That's what I mean, as long as even the doors open that, right, in that way?
Well, the number of people that have probably copies of those keys right now, this is so big, it would be, it would be if there was an incident, we would have to look back.
Okay.
Expect to be monitoring it regularly.
And when you give this person your code, give him the code that the alarm was, so. Look at all the, the alarm.
Oh, you're being slick there, so you're saying your alarm's gonna go off when I give my guy the code, yeah?
Yeah.
And how many people know the alarm code?
People that go in there.
Huh?
Everybody has the wrong.
Oh. I don't have one.
Exactly, you just said you wanna give away your code.
Reason.
Very selective in those codes.
Still gonna have the key to the back door, right, so if the cell site came off.
I think it'll be, I think you have some.
That you would, yeah.
I just tried to hit the wrong number. It's horrible, but all Bruce Snyder, it's telling me what my number is. Anytime they're knocking on the door. It's like, it's such a surprise.
I didn't ask enough questions, Marcus, wait a minute.
All right, ask them more questions.
No, just briefly tell me, so you go to the door, we all have a code, hit the code, all the employees of Stannis Swansea that work with one. Have this code, you go in there, right?
They have a.
They have an eight day of code. Okay. And when somebody goes in there and something happens in there. We can go back and see who was the last one in. I'm in. Okay. That was, I'm gonna cut to over the now, cause I think those are important things.
Every, every uh employee won't have a number, but they. I mean, every employee shouldn't have access.
Oh, whatever on that.
That's. That's, yeah. We'll put out something on Facebook. Say if you have a key, or you get a signature, we go.
Do a way to find out who's.
My buddy, I'm spreading the key.
So there was, did census?
Census, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, kind of associated, there was more on the fire station wall part, the station two wall, it was the place. Which also came on ice, uh D W director was wondering who won, so there's a fence at the higher part, and then there's kind of a lower. Not a huge truck, I feel like a lot of people aren't really, you really have to go looking to go back there. But we, we didn't wanna make the decision about whether to put up a fence or not. Um, the the fence and cost was about thirty two hundred dollars. So. I I, yeah, I know when we added on the dam, I think that made sense, I don't, this is the place where most people are walking around in the back of their.
No water roll, and there's nothing to attract anybody to go over that.
Way more dangerous.
And we did it there with the steps, but I was a little concerned with that, but we don't need them now, why would you?
We have five more.
That's right, right, and those steps were cracking.
They were not, yeah, not great.
I respect that.
Good, good, sir.
But I think they're fine when I saw. I don't think we need to spend that money for that, I think it's a lot of money, but unnecessary. But it didn't come out.
Can you put a straight up date? Uh, what is, like, five to the end?
I will say the real trail hole is filled, then I brought up last one.
Excellent.
And it's all set, and all beautiful. The way you can have no accidents on that.
You did it.
Did you, did you smooth the?
I raked it myself.
Got a blister too.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
How long's that gone?
It's gonna hold up a long time. No, it's pretty good.
Any public input? Being known?
Just play Scott out, I think it's an important middle discuss.
Yeah, you got two notebooks. What are you discussing that, Scott?
It'll be the ninth of January. That'll be a publication.
So, so the planning board actually votes that, and we, you guys, everybody that's on the planning board, that's how it works.
To get behind it or not. I don't know, votes to recommend foretenses or not, and then it'll be. General public vote. I vote votes to recommend forensics or not, and then it'll be general public will vote. And but that's the only times discussed, it's not discussed in the deliberative sessions, that's discussed right here in public hearing. So, that's it, discussion part of it. Then it doesn't change after that, until it gets on the ballot and you go here and.
I've been to a couple of Richmond's, oh Richmond does a, a candidate's night. And they, they discuss everything that's on the warrant. So, uh last year. Swansea Preservation Society did the select board candidate meeting upstairs. But in their, in this case, they have everybody. There's no debate, it's just each candidate gets up and says who they are and whatever. But then they go over the warrant, and they had one very similar to that, having to do with. A setback from wetlands. It was a contentious discussion. Weird, contentious with, with regard to, uh taking of property rights and, and all that, I don't know how to vote in the. On the warrant, but that was a, I thought that was something that Swansea ought to do, because you're right. How many people attend a public hearing about a zoning ordinance? Right, and, and it goes right to the ballot. And most people either vote yes, because they think the planning board wouldn't have it there if it wasn't.
Well, they say the planning board recommends it, so that's it for me, I don't have to read it.
That's similar to school board or whatever. Uh until they, until they realize what happened. And it's.
And they talk to the planning staff and they say, what? And then they get to the zone board.
Yeah, that's.
Can I just, can you clarify it a little for me, so the new thing you, that if there's a stream running down a piece of property. Right, that's considered wet, right?
Or a pond.
Or a pond, so completely on each side of the stream would be seventy five feet, you couldn't even mow. And seventy five feet you couldn't even mow, there'd be a hundred and fifty feet. Property that you couldn't do nothing, right? Is that what you're saying? And right now, where does it stand?
It stands right up to the wetland.
Right up to the wet.
It stands right now, in Swansea, in zoning ordinance, the streams or ponds are not considered part of the wetland. We go by the state definition of the wetland work order, that's it, but. Of the amendments coming into the zoning now would be adding streams, vernal pools, ones that thrive in the summertime. Uh ponds, uh water, bodies of water, that would be, also be considered wetland, and that would also be water. So that's, that's another amendment that's gonna be added in there with that.
With that?
Yeah, with that, it's adding to that area there.
Just right now, streams and ponds ain't considered wetlands.
No, no, it will, the, yeah, they are not.
Basically ponds are.
Yeah, they're on the.
Basically, the definition of the wetlands, so somebody told me that if you wanna know which wetlands, you would see. Cat nine tees and, and grass is a way to distinguish what a wetland is.
It's, it's, it's by soil sign, it's, it's by the soil, you know, they, they dig a little hole there, I'll see what the soils are. And if it matches that criteria, and if it matches some of the vegetation criteria, and standing water criteria. Uh then they're designated as a wetland. Yeah, but if, if there's a contention about it, then that's how it's decided. What land is, sign is.
So Scott, the, the pond that Bruce Ferney put in. Where he has lived on Flatwood Field Road, that fire pond that he put in back when they did Little Land Heights?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If this were to pass. The, the area that Mike Johnson has, he'd have to stay fifty feet from, from that pond.
Oh, both fire ponds are excluded, I'm pretty sure, in, in part of it, fire ponds are maintenance of them anyways, I'm not sure about them. I think the buffer may still have to be there, but they are excluded for, you know, maintaining and that type of things. So if it's fire pond, it could still be, and then probably mowed right up to it, you know, it's a fire pond.
Cause you're maintaining.
But another pond, something like, uh, any of the small ponds or that you see around any of the fields. That would be contained in that seventy five feet, all those around.
So the area that he mows. Uh off of the Carlton Bridge, Carlton Road Bridge on both sides. Which would be along the.
He would add seventy five feet to the river park.
Right, so, so that would all just be like this.
Supposed to be, yeah, by that, now of course, then there's the grandfathered clause, you know, okay. Every, every building that's closer than seventy five feet to these wetlands, stream or whatever it is, would be grandfathered in. It's, it's only a new construction like that, yet that sets it up for, uh. You wanna expand your building, you wanna put a fort down, you wanna do whatever you wanna do, when God, you're going for a variance, because you're not allowed to do it if it's in that zone. That's another headache, it's gonna set up a Z V A. And there's no, you know, filling or any dredging or any type of that stuff, which is in the wetland, but this would be in the seventy five foot area as well. So, if you had a driveway, you could maintain that driveway, but if you own a piece of property that's. Your driveway going into that property was within that seventy foot, five foot area, you'd have to go to the Z V A. To get a variance for that driveway into a piece of property back there, from what I can see.
So amazing.
And I think, well, this, they also, and I think, you know, this, this is the. They wanna designate what the prime wetlands are, and that would be a hundred what? Buffer around what's called prime wetlands, but to designate a prime wetland, they have to identify them, and they have to come in. The planning board for a public hearing as to, you know, in the public, the, the outcome as to what those prime wetlands are, what they're considering. And it had to be voted on at town meeting, I'm pretty sure, as to what those prime wetlands are, if it was a prime wetland, it'd be a hundred. But that's not in this zone, that's further down the road.
You know, control of protection. Be current use also, because they can't do anything there either?
I don't know about current use, shoreline protection, the current use is mainly for, well, the wetlands. The shoreline protection isn't considered a wetlands, they're in control of the.
You're adding, but those to the current use, I'm wondering. Protection.
Well, that's a hundred and twenty five feet, no. Well, my question was about current use, we aren't adding anything to current use, but my question was, can a property. Yeah, can they add the dry land to that current use there if they're paying taxes on it, can't do anything with it?
So why couldn't they do that shoreline protection? Cause it's the same dry land.
They don't own the river.
I mean, Mark's here for that.
What I'm saying is, they, they haven't put the river, it's wet by their property, they haven't put the river into shoreline, I mean, into a current use. But they may have put some of their wetlands into current use. So, yeah, I don't know about that, that's another confusing question.
It, it does create tremendous wrinkles from an assessing perspective, if you're anticipating that. From, from the standpoint that somebody comes and requests a variance to put a, put a deck on. Now, now that impacts the assessing as, as well as the, the question of, of being able to utilize that land.
So the current use manual defines wetlands as those areas of farm, forest, or unproductive land that are inundated. Or saturated by surface water or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support. And that under normal circumstances do support a prevalence of vegetation typically adapted for light and saturated soil condition. So I don't think the buffer would, does create that condition.
Right, so that's, that's the R S A, that's the exact word, the word R S A.
In the recognition.
And that comes from the R S A, you can look it up in the statute, that's a word to word. So you're, yeah, so that would not fall into that category, so you probably could not put that dry land into that, add it to that current use. So it wouldn't be. That's what I figured, then, like I say, it came up at the meeting. And actually, your representative's reason for voting for to continue to public hearing was because of that, that it looked like it could go in current use.
If that passes, how is that gonna affect the new fire station? Isn't there a wetland right there?
Uh is there?
Guys, like you shooting yourself in the foot?
I don't know. But the town of Swansea and any town is, is, uh, they do not have to abide by their own zoning limits. At all, that's part of the state action, we don't have to abide by it. Would look like it, but.
Was it I T L, I think, is that what you call it?
It exceeds the legislative.
Needs further, further study or further interest study. Put another table.
Uh just informational for planning board, just keeping it up on the select board as well. P P W director Russo and I had a chat today to talk about the next phase of drainage improvements at Precious Park. Uh so it's the first phase, it's the bathhouse and the, um, kind of water retention. Not water retention, rain garden, right? Um, kind of on the, lock down on the left side, so this is mostly looking at the right side, which has paved soil right now. Uh improving that, getting rid of the paved soil, and again, not quite a rain garden, but, um, it's so. Area, an area that's silted and then pipe into the lake, and then improve that kind of luge that goes down now from the driveway. Down to the, uh beach, so just giving it a up, that we talked about, setting it to the planning board for.
Sounds familiar, I, I remember when they came in, I think they mentioned that phase two was gonna entail something like that. So, yeah, it sounds like some more good improvements over there.
It's, I don't think the parking lot itself, but where the parking lot goes down. That area that we now is just kinda straight down to make it more accessible, hopefully avoid some of the water issues that it causes right now.
Thank you, Scott. We got a non-public or two?